Please. Thank you. All right, so good afternoon and thank you all for coming to the Policy and Budget Standing Committee of CAP special meeting. So we'll go ahead and get started. I first like to thank you all in the room and those in Zoom for coming today to our special meeting. I would like to remind everyone that we are here to discuss the AB 109 access funds. We have a real robust schedule today, and I want to firstly ask ground rules and expectations for today's meeting. By first setting the table for our board members and for those in the audience. So quick housekeeping items we will follow for those in the room and those that are on Zoom to provide public comments. First, for those in the public, please keep your participation on mute. And for those on the phone, use star six to unmute and unmute. We'll hear comments first from board members and then from the public by raising your hand. I will now go over our purpose as a committee, which is to assist CAP in making policy and budget recommendations to advance effective use of AB 109 funds and distribution. So first, we're going to start off with some welcome introductions and announcements. My name is Nicole Green. I am the Chair of Policy and Budget, and I am from East County, and I'll pass it over to Jeff.
Jeffrey Robinson, Representative Central.
Thank you, and committee members on Zoom.
Yeah, good morning, Justin Benzerber, West County.
We will now go to staff. I don't have any staff in the room, so staff on Zoom.
Hello, my name is Gariana Youngblood, and I'm with the ORJ.
Welcome, welcome.
Jill Ray with the Office of Supervisor Candace Anderson.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, I don't, Michelle went away, huh, Gariana? Okay, we will now move over to our guests in the room if they would like to give introductions on who they are.
Regina Bernie with Monument Impact. Julio Quintero with Monument Impact.
Welcome, welcome. And we will now move to our guests that are on Zoom if anyone would like to give up introductions on who they are.
Lauren Dalbert with RCF Connects.
Do I do that? Zoom, make it bigger.
Susan Woodhouse, Public Defender's Office.
Paris Jordan with RCF Connects.
And Rachel Rosekind, Community Member.
All right, welcome, everyone. I think that we've covered everybody. Okay, so next we will move over to our next item on the agenda, which is our public comment. So I first want to acknowledge that we have received several public comments in regards to the Guaranteed Income Pilot. I would like to recommend to the committee that we hold off on reading any of those public comments until we get to part of that agenda, or if there's any public comments about the access funds that we could please hold off until we get to Section 5 to allow time for that for the sake of our meeting. As we have a tight schedule, so we can allow when we get to that section. I wanted to make sure that committee members are okay with that. Justin, are you okay with that? Okay, what about you? All right. So for this section of the public comment, if there are any public comments that are not related to the AB 109 access funds, or any items under the jurisdiction of a community advisory board and not on the agenda, we'll open it up for public comment. Go on. Seeing none, so just again to I know that you may, if you're looking at the agenda, you may see that there is an item under Section 2. We will come back to that when we get to Section 5. So we will review those public comments that were submitted. So now we're going to go ahead and move over to Agenda Item Number 3, which is the approval of our minutes from March 15th. Policy and CAP meeting, I'll be looking for a motion to approve and a second motion. Thank you, Gariana. I'll give a couple of minutes for us all to review the agenda items. It's on pages 10 through 12. Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Jeffrey.
Okay, Jeffrey made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Gariana, can you take a vote?
Yes, I have a, I have a motion and I have a second. I'm going to take a roll call vote since we have a member who is joining us virtually, Nicole.
Hi.
Justin.
Hi.
And Jeffrey.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we will now move right along. We're going to move on to Item Number 4 on the agenda, which is discuss and review our CAP policy and budget recommendations. This is Attachment 3, starts on page 13 and 17. So we're really not going to go into a discussion about them. We just wanted to put them back here as a reminder of what was submitted in reference to our recommendation for the AB 109 access funds. So this document, scroll a little bit, Gariana, is what was originally submitted to CCP at the very beginning of this last year, and it breaks down our key areas, which was the housing, behavior, health, employment, and pre and post release. We won't have to actually go through the document, but I wanted that document here since we are going to be focusing on those pre those priority areas in Section 5. So before we move along, I did want to open it up for committee members to see if you had any questions or want to have any kind of brief discussion regarding this item. And then, Justin, I wanted to add this here because I know you had a question about verbiage that we were using. So this is the document that me and Crawford originally submitted to CCP.
Thanks, yeah, this is great. I was looking for if there was any language that CCP had presented to us. I think Gariana answered, so we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other feedback, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions from our committee members, I'll open it up for the public if anyone has any questions regarding our recommendation for 23, 24 that was submitted. Being none in the room, and I don't really see any hands on Zoom. So we may use this as a just a heads up kind of for the next act, number five, we probably will toggle back and forth between the two. So just wanted to give that disclosure as it's placed inside of the agenda. So we will go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is our reason for being here today, to debrief all of the priority areas for the AB 109 access funds. So before we, the committee team actually go into our discussion, I would like to first open it up to a public comment to allow for those who have submitted public comment to read and are on Zoom. So we will first start with those that are in the room, who will be provided with at least three minutes to be able to give your public comment. Wait, let me get my timer. Justin usually here with me to be my defense. Let's see, so. Okay, so we will first open up to those in the room, and we have Monument Impact, so I'm going to go ahead and click.
Good afternoon, Policy and Budget Subcommittee. My name is Regina Bernie. I'm with Monument Impact in support of our Guaranteed Income Pilot Elevate Conqueror Family Economic Pilot Program in collaboration with the state of Concord. I'm here to speak in support of a guaranteed income pilot for Contra Costa's reentry population through AB 109 funds. Monument Impact is recognizing the community as opposed to resources, including guaranteed income. Monument Impact is passionate about our mission to ensure our communities have a voice, tools, and relationship necessary to have equitable share of the wealth in this region. The staff in our office receives an average of 50 calls a week in from committee members in need of resources, jobs, and support because they're about to be evicted. From 2020 to early 2022, Monument Impact launched the largest relief funding Contra Costa, distributing $1 million received through the last three funding, serving 3,200 families. We worked for over seven months to research up to help supply some family and help them recover. We partnered with other organizations to form the Contra Costa GI Working Group. We focus on the community's message regarding guaranteed income. The GI Working Group posted focus groups in English and Spanish, and Monument Impact also led a focus group, which was led in English, Spanish, and Farsi. The focus groups provided residents with an opportunity to learn more about GI and allowed us to gather information on the community's needs. All the responses were very similar. The need for basic needs, money for transportation to work and school, and being able to have extra income for daycare. We also asked if they would prefer to receive $1,000 for six months or $500 a year, most opted for the extended time of cash assistance of $500 a month a year. I would like to share one of the responses we gathered. This monthly cash assistance would be more stable than an actual job, which will also bring a sense of peace that would allow me to cover my child's basic needs. Most of the participants did not receive social welfare benefits, but the ones that did noted the money received was insufficient to cover the basic needs of everyday life. Through our research, we saw the importance of centering the community in our responsibility to address the needs they voiced, which is why I urge you to fund a guaranteed income program for our reentry population and consider them throughout the entire pilot design process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're one minute, we're 43 seconds ago. Perfect timing. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming in person and actually speaking on guaranteed income. So thank you. And I do want to say something. I would say for the whole meeting, so I didn't know if you have to leave or understand why. Thanks. So we would now move to public comment on Zoom. I believe we do have. Oh, yes. We have one more in the room, I'm sorry. Yes, I apologize.
So my name is Julio Quintero. I am the Project Manager for Elevate Conqueror Monument Impact's Family Economic Equity Pilot. And of course, I'm here to speak in support of guaranteed income for Contra Costa's reentry population. So I have seen firsthand how guaranteed income has impacted the individuals in our community. Elevate Conqueror is providing 120 single-parent families with $500 a month for a year. 87% of our participants are Latino, and on average are making about $21,000 a year. Most of them, 50% of them are renting rooms due to high rents. And so since the launch of our program in November of last year, we have seen that parents are using this money for basic needs, primarily paying for their rent, putting food on the table, and buying medication. Multiple of our participants have been able to switch to better-paying jobs. Their levels of stress and anxiety have decreased. One of our participants was able to renew his driver's license and his car registration. Another was able to buy beds for her children after the first time. Guaranteed income allows these families to have breathing rooms and partake in things that we often take for granted, like spending time with our children or attending family events. Beyond this, Elevate Conqueror has given families the ability to build a better future. Adriana has fully been building her savings so that she and her baby can have an apartment of their own by the end of the year. Elena has become more civically engaged and has participated in the ongoing city council meetings for rent control and just cause addiction to help protect her neighbors. Guaranteed income has truly stabilized many of these families. And as we know, our pantry population needs this kind of stability in order to thrive and become active members of our community. They, like any of our families, deserve the opportunity to build a better future for themselves.
Thank you. Any questions for them before I move on? Thank you also for presenting today. We would like to move to public comment on Zoom. Are there any hands raised on Zoom?
Lauren, you can go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Dalbert. I'm a resident of Bay Point. And I'm calling in to request support for investment of funds from AB 109 to support the reentry population here in Contra Costa County. Primarily, I just want to tell, you know, kind of tell the story that, you know, about myself as a twice formerly homeless disabled veteran who is at 60% disabled with PTSD. And my brother, who is also a formerly homeless disabled veteran, who is rated at 100% PTSD. And the reason that both of us are formerly homeless and not currently homeless is because we're both part of a federal government, permanent federal government Guaranteed Income Program called VA Disability. And that was the thing that allowed us to go from being unhoused and to being, you know, permanently housed. And in my brother's case, you know, you know, he was basically what folks would call a career criminal, where he was doing a 10-year sentence for shoplifting. You know, he was doing a lot of shoplifting at the rate that they considered him to be a organized criminal. But luckily, he got out with the help of the VA, and then they got him a lot of mental health, mental health support. But most importantly, they also got him rated for PTSD and that regular monthly income. And since he's received that monthly income, you know, he's had no other issues with this criminal injustice system because he's not a criminal. He was just trying to survive. And, you know, so it's very important that folks have access to an income floor, especially when they're coming back home from these institutions of harm. And, you know, and it's more than just, you know, not going back to prison. You don't know what a person will do. I mean, like I said, I was unhoused for five years, and now here I am, four years later, running a poverty fighting program, you know, so, you know, this guaranteed income is very transformational. And you never know, you know, what diamonds in the rough are going to turn into diamonds with access to this. So I would strongly recommend that we provide this income floor for folks who are coming back home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate you coming today to speak in reference to guaranteed income. Thank you very much. Do you have any others on Zoom?
Harris, I'm not sure if you were raising your hand or if that was in support, if you'd like to come off mute. If you're able.
Yes, that was definitely in support. As far as a public comment for myself, I do definitely support guaranteed income. I'm a mom in Contra Costa County. I live in Ariac. And I believe that guaranteed income is absolutely necessary, not only for mothers, but for our children as well, and also for fathers, too. Guaranteed income would also be a really great help for those that are going through reentry programs because it is a dignified option where folks can make personal choices for themselves without having to be influenced by any other outside decision-making programs, such as that. I think that folks being able to exercise their personal choices, they would be able to actually make great choices for themselves, use that money for means of survival, and then also be able to make better choices for their children as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here today and speaking as well, you know, giving that personal experience from an ARU, you appreciate you taking your time out of the day to come and support of guaranteed income. So, but thank you very much. Do we have any others? On Zoom?
No other hands.
So we do have a few submissions that were provided. I believe we had them printed. But I will not read the whole thing for Batum. I think some are in the.
There's two in the packet.
Which two? We have Rachel's in the packet, and what's the other one in the packet?
Kevin Scott.
Take a second to I think we have Rachel on Zoom if she wants to give a summary of it, or if we want to point out, any of the committee members want to point out what some of the highlights. Rachel did come to our last meeting and gave a great, robust presentation about guaranteed income and provided us with a lot of great information. Thank you, Rachel, for submitting this public comment and taking all of that amazing information that you gave the committee and put it into this document to point out those highlights in reference to the pilot as well as the population. Some of the sections I will highlight that when I read through this are the data sources and benefit protection and the way that it's broken down, where it gives a recap and information for us to refer back to. I wanted to give the committee team members a second to read it if they have not had a chance to, to see if they had any questions for her. It should be in the agenda packet. It is on. Sorry, let me go back to the beginning. So these public comments are on page, it's Attachment 1, page 4 through 9. And the very first one that we start off with is Rachel's Rosekind.
I don't have any additional comments, Nicole. I think it just continues to show the diversity of investments that are in this space and our ability to kind of continue to test how like what populations can have largest impact on this. I think last time Rachel spoke, she was advocating for some type of advisory or working group to help select some of the most impacted individuals as an opportunity here with these funds. So I'm just appreciative of the continued work to gather and curate this content for us.
Okay, and then we can move along to Sarah's on here to give you a second if you have a chest. I'm not sorry, I'm not sorry. Did you say Kevin? I'm trying to read the words. So Kevin's in here. I did point, no, no questions or anything about it. Just give you a second to read it. I didn't want to read it for Batum. It's already inside of the agenda packet, but just wanted to point out, he did list the story in there. I do not want to say the individual's name incorrectly, but I did like the fact that he gave an example of a testament of how guaranteed income did help an individual. Vanetta, Vanita? And I was able to help with housing, addressing addiction, and reunited with family. So I appreciated that, that touching air of giving a example, as well as in the second paragraph of its targeting, targeting the formerly incarcerated residents, and I'm giving an example of that. And how much money was dispersed. So it ties back into what Rachel has presented us with more data to kind of look at as we're going over our recommendations. And then we had two others that were submitted. Also, I know it's not in the package, but it was submitted by Mr. Holman from Rise and Sarah Blackton from CEO. CEO of 4CT. Also provided information to lift up guaranteed income. So this information, can we share it with Justin and Jeffrey later since it wasn't in the packet? Any other questions? And I won't read them. Again, I won't read them for Batum due to, due to time, but we will provide the chief committee members with the other letters on there. For the one from Mr. Holman, same thing, just pointed out information they gave us. I appreciate the example of the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program, how many participants, how much they get, $100 per month for 12 months and $500 a month for six months. So same thing. I've, just as since you're online, I don't really have it to give to you at this moment, but I did bring a copy for you all to read, and it kind of breaks down that information. So in hindsight, since you can't see it, I won't really go into too much detail, and we'll just get it sent out to you after the meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Other, I first want to thank everyone that participated today to come in and uplift guaranteed income. I appreciate your support and actually coming and providing us with more information, as well as the examples I was not aware of. Again, we did get a very great presentation from Rachel, but to be able to see exactly how this would impact and help an individual are great for the committee as we're thinking about our recommendations. So I'll open it up. If anyone had any questions or comments before we move on. All right. Okay, so we're going to move on to the committee to discuss our recommendations around those four key areas. So we're first going to start off with housing. So throughout the week, we did all come together as committee members to try to pull our ideas together based on all of these meetings and what we felt that we wanted to move forward in recommendations. So we'll first start off with our housing recommendation number one and discuss those key areas that we felt as a committee that we wanted to uplift. So some of the ideas that we thought about so far, and then we can have discussion about this, was funding for additional core team focused on the reentry for pre and post release. We thought about exploring prevention, diverse, diverse services, financial assistance for case management and housing program solving. A discussion around maybe an RFP between collaboration between H3 and probation, where we can outline exactly the type of housing structures that we're looking for for this one-time fund and increase the use of emergency shelter beds. And what we mean by that assessment to understand barriers to use and recommendations on approaching to increased nightly use rate. So those are where we as a committee kind of stood on. So I wanted to open it up for a discussion around our items. I'll open it up for the committee, talk about that in more depth.
Can you, can you read those?
Yes. So we'll start with the first one. I told you, I go up and down. So the first one was funding for additional core teams. That was one of the recommendations from H3. Now I had a question on that. That is also part of that budget modification ask, even though it falls for our recommendation number one. So that was one of the items as a, as a committee, and definitely jump in if you have. As a, as a committee that we would like to move forward with, but with the reentry core team, someone assigned and designated to support our reentry population. That's the first one. Another item that was submitted that day through housing, I believe it was either from Hope Solutions. It was explore prevention, diverse services, financial assistance for case management and housing problem solving, so more funding towards prevention. For those that maybe already have housing or preventing them from becoming homeless, having more options, more housing options for that. And then our last meeting that we had to discuss this, we were talking about, you know, we're talking about exploring the prevention. I think it goes back to, we had settled on maybe getting the RFP out about the housing, because the feedback that we had from all that feedback we got from H3 Hope Solutions allows, I mean, there's so much to take in about the housing. So maybe going that route with an RFP between H3 and probation to kind of put something out there. And then we can design exactly our, have input on what that housing model should look like or what we're help me if I'm not saying it right, what we want that RFP to act, I guess, ask for, to look like.
They say that H3 recently, not too long ago, wanted
RFP will measure.
A RFP of measure, measure X funds for homelessness prevention. So that's, that could be potentially a model to look at. Now, you say you could see this as a joint between H3 and probation. Is this so in an effort to ensure that language is, we can certainly coordinate with H3, but I foresee, given that they are sort of the experts on it,
Right.
would be potentially the administrators of homeless, homelessness. Would be potentially the administrators of homeless homelessness prevention for those that are justice impacted.
Correct.
Assuming that that's something that they would be um interested in.
Correct. So I wasn't um sure exactly how to word it. Um, the model that I've seen was at RFP with measure X and H three. So I love the way that they put out the um RFP for individuals to submit for housing. Um, and I thought it would kind of work well for us as well with this particular one fine funding. Yeah, they're up to it.
Well, these are you guys.
Uh, any feedback from uh Justin or Jeffrey about that item?
Can we take it, Nicole, can we take a step back?
Sure.
So I think what would be helpful for me is like uh kind of a vision or an idea of what we want to generate here, because I think we have a ton of really great ideas. Um, and we want to see them all enacted, right? And so we want to make it, and sorry for my voice, I tested COVID positive for COVID yesterday, so I feel terrible. Um, but uh we, we want to make it as easy for CCP in the county to enact all of this. And so we want to make it really, really straightforward. Um, and I don't know how we do that, like in alignment with the dollars that are available or like percentages or are we just leaving it up to them wholeheartedly to decide allocations on each of these projects or ideas? I I just think the way that we have it right now is pretty broad and it's it's gonna take a lot of work to get to an end product. And so I'm trying to find the balance of like, how do we, how do we make it detailed without being overburdened some?
So I had the same question that 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 you had around the percentage and how much, and I just kept playing in my head, don't think about the money. So I I have the same question on how to to tie this together because we have all these recommendations. But then do we say we want to give, because we're not supposed to give a catch a dollar amount to it. So when we say, for example, we want to do RFP for housing with H three and probation or whatever. How do we facilitate? Uh, how do we explain that? So is CCP going to decide on how much percentage?
No, I think they're going to be looking to you guys to determine what the spending allocation should be. Because remember, you have a big, you have a total of 15 million that you can spend. And across four different priority areas. And we did receive in the information that was provided to you across all these priority areas of the various presenters.
Right.
Um, cost estimates that you could potentially work from, right? Um, they gave you some operational costs for a year. So what that would look like. Uh, you also have those program modifications that also give a dollar amount. Um, but that's based on a one year estimate, right? So you can, my, I I would suggest that you first identify what's the area or serve or whatever the case may be, the the service program, what have you, that you want to see it that you want to recommend. And then based on the information that you received from the various presenters, utilize their recommended cost estimate to then determine what should be allocation for that. So for example, you're going for the quarantine, then essentially you look at the core, uh, H three's program modifications uh amount for that. And and now it's, I can't remember exactly what the total was, but let's say it's 250,000 to do uh a quarantine for for one year. You subtract 250,000 for 15 million. Or if you say actually want to see this core, uh, this quarantine be enacted for the next three years, 250,000 times three. I'm not great with quick math, but whatever that total amount is, then you subtract that from 15 million. Now you're left with whatever's there remaining to start. So you you can kind of start playing with dollars in that way, but you've been given guidance through the various presenters with the cost estimates that they've um.
Okay, so we do need to consider that.
You do, you do, absolutely.
Okay.
If you just give, because there's no difference, if you just give CCP the ideas, that's no different from your recommendations that you presented to them before.
Okay.
And what was all of this planning, right, for the last several months in service to, you know, so um yeah, you need to, you know, and and I I would say these could be just general bucket numbers, you know, or um for the various uh recommendations that you may have. Um, so don't feel compelled to have such an exacting amount, but um you do need to have some clear, you do need to recommend clear guidance to the CCP of what you would like to see those allocations be for different programs or services you want to see done in each priority area.
Okay, so that was, so what we've done so far, and I think it just got off somewhere in the translation because we didn't put a dollar amount. We did sit down and discuss where the like the programs and services that we wanted to recommend, but we didn't set amount to it yet at all. Okay. Okay. We'll have another special meeting.
So you know, keep it with prevention. Um, and Gary, I don't know how handy you could pull up some of the responses that we got specifically from H three, but I I would say that they're in their written response. Um, I believe there was some um recommended allocation for prevention specifically. So you can look at that and say, uh, and they may have done it per a certain number of um certain total number of of individuals. Uh, in which case, again, you could utilize as guidance for yourselves for what your allocation would be uh for uh homelessness prevention that you would want to see RFPed out.
Okay. Okay. There are numbers that we, I mean, I I know for a fact there's numbers that we can't go back because they were all presented.
Yeah, they they all presented, you guys.
Yeah, we do. We just didn't grab those data. We went through all the presentations and what was presented and then just came up with a list based on what we've heard on this, what the the services or programs that we would like to recommend, but we did not attach a dollar amount. So we would need to attach um.
Now, if you need help with this in terms of planning wise, you can at least talk through where the programs and um services you want to recommend today and then share that at the next general cab meeting.
Okay.
To get their um centrally their endorsement. And then following that, you have a separate, another policy and budget to finalize your recommendations. So we at that point, um, you guys can decide what the allocations will be.
I thought we
Yeah.
I thought the meeting was after CCP.
I believe we got provided with more time at our last.
Remember, this is your special meeting. The CCP meeting isn't until April twenty ninth, I believe.
So we have a, we have an April meeting?
Nineteenth, yeah.
Okay. I don't, okay, that's well, Patrice, I don't think going through all the cost, oops, sorry, I don't think going through all the costs today is gonna be time effective.
We won't be able to go through the costs today.
What's that?
And I I agree with you. We won't be able to go through the costs today. We'll just only be able to review. I think we should go through our recommendations that we typed out and then just come back um with the like that recommendation later, because I I mean personally, I don't have a cost in my mind. I need to go back and look at all those documents and pull that data. Because we didn't do that. So I I would like to, if both are okay with it, kind of move it, but
That's serious.
Yeah, that's a serious, man, I I took, I'm honest, I took money off my mind and I had the same question he had and I'm like, okay, well.
And and if we can assist at least um in preparation for the um next, for your April meeting.
Okay.
Coming through the cost estimates that were provided through the presentations, map that out against what the program and services you want to go with today, and then maybe you have something a little bit more. You you can have side by side funding allocations.
That'd be perfect. I i is that a task that you just uh offered?
I think I
I thank you. I I appreciate you so much. You must see the stress bag go across my forehead. I apologize.
At least then for housing, um, I'm hearing quarantine, um, homelessness prevention. And you eventually.
Well, so let me just ask the question, um, especially if we figure out doing the the RFP that this prevention can eventually go, can possibly go into that depending on how it was going to be RFPed out, right? It could be an item in the home that is for prevention diverse services. Oh, the the um. No, I know, I I misread it. I'm sorry. And we we had the, the other one was increased use of emergency shelter beds. Assessment to understand barriers to use and recommendations on approach to increase nightly use rate. So that was another bullet that we.
So you're asking for, you you you're recommending an assessment of the utilization of the shelter, right? So that sounds more like some, so it's not necessarily a program or service, but it's more of a um I I hear that as more of a project for H three to do its own sort of analysis of
Okay.
how the shelter beds are being utilized specifically by those who are justice impacted. So that may or may not have a dollar amount, in which case um that could require just further conversation with H three about what that potential looks like and or if they already have something uh making some in place um to assess their own programming and and do some system enhancements in that regard.
Okay, so while we're leaving off.
Uh, I think this one came from the conversation we were having last week, Patrice, about like they're able to assess it and they know how much use rate is, but we had all talked about all of the barriers that prevent someone from utilizing it. And so trying to come up with recommendations or approaches, I don't know if that's like an external evaluator or someone from the CBOs or probation, et cetera, who are, you know, having this conversation about our ultimate goal is getting these people in housing safely and securely in housing that they want to be in, right? So I don't know if it would just be like, yeah, I guess, I guess I'm lost a little bit because it's, it's not just like H three, go do this. It's like, we all need to be talking about how we do this better. But maybe there is no dollars attached to it. Maybe it's just a recommendation.
If you're looking for an evaluation um of what is currently available um in terms of housing resources with the justice population, because our last conversation had to do with specifically with the 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 shelter beds. Had more, had more to do with the fact that shelter, so emergency shelter is part of this one strategy of the whole array of housing resources that can support individuals who are um who are unhoused or at risk of being homeless. So that's what you're trying to get at. You're trying to get, if I'm hearing you correctly, is what is the um value assessment, whatever, whatever terminology we want to use here to um is the aim goal to determine then how best to increase then the usage of emergency shelter? Or is this just looking across the board at that a a range of housing approaches?
So I I think one of the key points is, I know we left off on trying to figure out how to increase the usage and figure out the why. So an assessment of the, that was one of the bullets that I wrote down. One of our goals. And so I was going to ask if that is something that we want to do and it's not really a dollar amount that we want to attach is more of an assessment. Is this something that we can request for our program to serve this subcommittee to look into, since they kind of focus more on the program?
Even if you ask them to look into it, I mean, they, you would still need to partner with H three to figure out in what ways do they may already do some of, that's my thing.
Okay.
Already do some of this assessments or like program assessments if you will. Um, and so that might just simply be a conversation with them to see what's possible because you all want to see an increase of usage of the shelter beds specifically for the justice population.
Okay.
And from their vantage point, then what might be the barriers to that? So that that can still be a recommendation, but not necessarily a recommendation with a purpose of 15 million.
Okay.
I mean, unless they say, actually, we need some of that money to do. In which case, but uh
Put a dollar amount on it. So just to kind of recap, I'm sorry, Justin, did that kind of answer the question that you had? The kind of recap are um, again, it's our recommendation funding for additional core team or reentry core team member um to explore um some additional prevention and diversion services around financial assistance, case management and housing. Um, possible RFP with collaboration with H three and probation if they would like to.
Nicole, can I back you up on on this preventing diversion? Do you want to blend that as part of the core? Or is that?
That's fine, because they came with core. We can blend it together.
Okay.
Um, I I probably recommend you set you in terms of costs.
Ah.
They want to separate those two out.
Okay.
Now you can discuss how you want the two to be integrated in terms of how they operate, which I'm sure that's what's even happening now. The core teams, right? But they each
Have a dollar amount. Because I would, under submission, it does have two different dollar amounts attached to it.
And what if we're staffing essentially?
Right.
Where team is 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 staffing, hopefully maintenance to vehicle, whatever other things that they need to support um the operations of the team.
Correct.
And then the other is the dollar amount.
For the, for the actual service itself, yes. And I know I did see that in the document as we was putting this together. There is a dollar amount attached to it. Now for that, um, this is just a general question. Now for that RFP part, there is no, there isn't going to be a dollar amount attached within the documents that we were provided. Well, it'll be, it'll be us more looking at what was submitted from all the housing program and possibly just coming up with how much we think we want to allocate towards that, right?
I think they, yeah, I, I think they had listed.
They have a whole breakdown of all kinds of houses.
But I want to say I think they had listed toward for prevention as well.
Okay, I'll have to go look.
Nicole, I think for me, this is one that like any dollars we have left, we throw at it because everyone's been asking for more housing for this population. And so after we get through the other dozen or so recommendations, say we have $3 million left, we just throw it at this RFP. I don't know how you all feel about that.
I mean, I'm, as of right now, I'm fine. And then when we come back to our next meeting, when we actually have everything next to each other, then I'll have a better idea of what I'm looking at. Um, because I don't have any numbers in front of me. So before I can say yay or no to that, I have to see the numbers because I don't want, we have a lot of ass. And by the time we get done, it may not be anything left. So I would rather probably want to set a dollar. I don't want to give money away to other things where the most need is housing. So it it may be best for us to set a dollar amount because I'm when I did calculate with everything, I think the old, so I do not want to lose the opportunity to um provide additional housing to our population if we can. So um I don't really have a yes or no answer. But I I definitely don't want to leave housing as last. Um, so I think we're okay so far with what our ideas, our recommendations to bring to full cab. Are we all on the? Give them all to you, Patrice?
Uh, so I have four. I have um dollars toward some of diversion prevention services. And separately, you want assessment for increasing usage of of shelter beds. Was that the only?
The RFP too.
Well, that is, that that's, I wrote the next to the prevention.
Okay, okay.
And we have this written out, Patrice, we have this written out in a Google.
The Google Drive.
Okay.
So when I present it to Cab, do you want me to present it with the the RFP with the prevention? I want to make sure that I'm articulating this in the correct manner.
I think the easiest way um for you all to present this is really in bullet form.
Okay.
But are the, no different from what you have in your uh, the recommendations you submitted to P uh to CCP. In in bullet form, what are the programs and services under each priority area that you're recommending should be funded? In in bullet form, what are the programs and services under each priority area that you're recommending should be funded? Because then later you can then tie that up or batch that up against in the funding allocation. Some of the other details to it, like, for example. You're you're saying RFP for prevention services, you you can make it clear that you want that to be delivered by CBOs, for example. Well, we know if that's going to happen, that has to be RFPed out.
So RFP what we have on here is, okay, so prevention and diversion services. Then we also have a note of expansion on housing support specific to AB one oh nine population. And then we outlined some additional bullets that we took away from our meeting, which is to increase housing support from twelve months to at least twenty four months. Uh, we want to do the following, the one, two, four framework, framework from interim permanent and housing prevention, expansion of core recurring needs for mental health substance abuse, creation of a list of like those subpopulations between. So we kind of broke it down of what we were looking for.
That sounds like details for your formal proposal.
Okay.
I think, yeah, you just need.
Don't go that deep.
At this point, you haven't even determined what all you want or you've not shared it publicly, what all you all want to recommend in terms of programs and services across each priority.
Okay. All right. So I think we're done with housing. Any comments from the committee? On what we have so far for the housing part of it? No, any public comment? Okay, our next recommendation was number five, which was to increase a target support and expand community based resources for individuals with disabilities that are also justice system involved. Um, so we agreed that we're interested in reference to the behavioral health mobile on demand pilot of funding for community support workers, mental health. And there was the item for education and training for CBOs around Narcan training and learning tools for individuals dealing with substance use, mental health, or do a diagnosis. Those were three recommendations that we made as a committee. Any feedback on those? Yes, ma'am. We recommend the behavioral health mobile on demand pilot. The next one was funding for the community support workers, CSWs for mental health. And then the third one was additional education and training for CBOs around Narcan training and learning tools for individuals dealing with substance use, mental health, and do a diagnosis.
Narcan training.
And and learning tools. Learning tools for CBOs dealing with our population for substance use, mental health, and do a diagnosis. And it's probably not a dollar amount for for.
Well, I was going to say in Narcan, especially Narcan training and any training with regards to interaction with the clients that have behavioral challenges, I'm sure there are trainings out there that already exist that can be leveraged.
Do we have any discussion needed around those bullets, those items for recommendation number five? Meeting members? Okay, anything from the any questions from go ahead.
No, I was just going to recommend that just for the sake of the 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 members of the public that are on, you probably want to reference this based on the priority or you're saying recommendation.
Sorry, that that priority area is for the behavioral health, my apologies. So the recommendation number, thank you for pointing it out. Recommendation number one was for the housing priority. Recommendation number five was for the behavioral health priority. So for the behavioral health priority, again, we're recommending behavioral health mobile in demand pilot and funding for community support workers for mental health. Um, and then we would like to see more education and training for CBOs around Narcan training and learning tools. So um, for that one, again, it may just be looking into what's already there without a set dollar amount, we recommend additional education and training for CBOs. Any discussion on that? No. Go ahead and move on to recommendation number six is for our priority for employment. I should just type the things on there. So this section, we're going to discuss our priority, our employment, the employment, excuse me, the employment priority and what we want to recommend from the workshop base as a committee. So the first one that we wanted to do is the evaluation with with country pass the county human resource practices through the county to identify positions that can be filled by AB one oh nine individuals. So the to give some more feedback on what that meant, some takeaways we took was creating a list of for HR, for human resources to share publicly and prioritize the hiring of certain positions. Publicize matrix to gauge the number of AB one oh nine. Create a job training program with on the job training to provide pathways and county. So we'll have to look back at the notes to see if there's any dollar amount tied to that. Create internship for county positions and informations, excuse me, informations on their nexus determination. And this also, I know that we requested for additional information from RupaCon regarding the pilot for this. I don't think we're giving a dollar amount.
During the meeting, they mentioned that after hearing human resources presentation, they offered that they'd be willing to consider developing some sort of a pilot internship or pathway toward some of these county positions.
Wow, okay. So since there isn't, there isn't a dollar amount attached to this, this will be something that we'll need to come up with, Justin and Jeffrey, on how much you want to allocate to this particular item. The next one was.
Sorry, sorry, make sure I captured it perfectly. Yeah, feedback. This is for the purpose of feedback to H HR. What you really want to get at is to see if HR is able to assess of all of its available, of all the available county positions, which would be word board. But I guess open for those that are in their reentry population and then separately internship pilot.
Correct.
That would.
Will help get them prepared for the county job. So.
But now when they presented, they mentioned that, you know, all of the positions are essentially open to anyone in the public. And then they go through their determination sort of process to determine whether or not that person can should be recommended or forgive me, I'm not using the appropriate.
It's the nexus, the nexus determination. So what we took away from that was they use this nexus determination to figure out who qualifies for what based on your charges. So we did ask for a copy of that. So that recommendation is to continue that collaboration and we're requesting that information or the program is so that we can create a pilot to help people get prepared on how to apply and and know what jobs they can actually apply for within the county. Did that clarify a little bit?
Not not. But I I guess I'm trying to understand that what when you say you're asking for more information from HR about or anything about what is this charges that would potentially.
So so initially, okay, so let me just back up. Initially, the the original, so okay, so the first recommendation, just take that away for a second, is we would like to have a pilot to help people get prepared to apply for county positions and jobs. That's initially what we want to ask for. The the add on to that is that that collaboration we took away between HR and our CBOs to be able to share information about county jobs that individuals can apply for. Um, and they mentioned a nexus determination document that they used that identifies based on someone's charges, what jobs can and cannot have. And it was asked that they could share that document so that when the CBOs are working with participants, they can better guide them on the type of job that they can and cannot have within the county. My second win now, so. Did I make it? Did I? Okay. It was I was reading the way it was on here and I'm so sorry for that. Did I did I speak up loud enough for everyone on here? Because I know I was talking directly to Patrice and I wanted to make sure that you all on Zoom heard what I just said. Did you hear me, Justin? Okay.
That would be clear.
And are we are we in agreeance with that? First one, yes? Got a yes?
And the CBO could just tell them that they could go to Clean Slate, the Public Defender's Office, and get a letter, a certificate of rehabilitation. It's not as hard to get hired by the county as you probably would think. It's not that difficult.
It 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 so then my my response though is that it is because it took me very long time. It depends on charge. So depending on what your charge is, it took me seven months.
It's been a long.
I was gonna say.
Well, well, that.
Relative was not long because I think generally speaking, for anybody that's getting, you know, all of this. It can take a little minute.
Well, I guess.
There's process like Clean Slate and
Sure.
and your record. And there's a process. It's not like it's impossible.
Well, let me let me just clarify. So I won't say it's the timing. It goes back to what we talked about the CBOs. It's not the actual timing of it. It's the way that it makes somebody feel that has been incarcerated. Because we're not, you're not told that the six, seven months is because of the process. You're told the six, seven months is because of your background. So you're going through a very strong of it's very traumatizing to some people because you're being asked for that six, seven months to reexplain what you did over and over. And then so it's it's a big light on that. So the whole goal is is yes, any county job can take that long to get into, but it's preparing someone that just got that's incarcerated to not be re-triggered. So how to prep them to know that it's okay to go for that job.
But that's what I'm saying, that those are things you can do prior to applying for that county job.
But they don't know that. We know that. They don't know that. A lot of them don't know that. So that's what the pilot is for, is to help them know that. Hopefully, but if that's what we're here to discuss, if you see that want to add on to it, throw it out there because I don't know everything. So if there's something that we can add on to this to even make it better, do you think would be great, throw it in the?
Clean Slate works.
I know I know that it works.
I mean, maybe that's a core component then of the pilot too, right, is that ensuring that Clean Slate, based on how pilot we roll out, that they're like, I don't know, Clean Slate office hours that are built in that. So that way, Public Defender's Clean Slate Unit is also you you kind of doing, you may have a CBO that's running the pilot or the internship component of it. Public Defender's Office may be coming in or the Clean Slate component of it, and then frequent conversation with HR to see how the that pathway into some of these positions or regular updates of available positions. So it could very well be a really nice sort of collaboration.
Right.
Across various.
And it's just educating folks, please, that's work, you go directly to the Public Defender's Office. It works very great. Correct. So I think it's more education because people don't know that, like I had to explain that to someone to just go directly there. Or go through other avenues. So it's maybe adding that on to our list. You can go directly there yourself, right?
So I think, can I add one piece here? Excuse me, I think for me, it keeps coming back to like, how do we get more AB one oh nine people into county jobs, right? And without an alignment of investment from the HR department, that's just not going to happen. And so we need to create pathways where people understand what roles they may or may not be eligible for for them to even come to the table and say want to get into this type of job.
See, that's just it, Justin. It's not the county's job to show the individual's rehabilitation. That's why I think that's like things like Clean Slate and things like that, like a CBO or something like that. They could show a great role in helping people do things like Clean Slate and certificates of rehabilitation, things that show a potential employer that the person has changed their life and did things to rehabilitate themselves. Those are things that the county, the state, other employers see as great things. Those are things that the county respects, state respects, all employers respect.
Right.
County's no different than any other employer.
Right.
You know, the county's no different than any other employer.
Well, I mean, we can point out that to piggyback and and Jill, I do see your hand to piggyback. That goes back to where our CBOs were in the wrong. And they, that's what they were asking for from the HR department was can you give us that nexus document that outlines all of that so that we can better support individuals when they come in for us to go, okay, based on your charges you made, here you have a better chance or can you get into this job? So they can have a better idea how to spark them. So I think that leads us right back to where I think from HR, we were just requesting more information on that nexus document that they kept pointing out so that we have a better idea of what they're looking at when they're making these recommendations when they're looking over the application. And Jill, I apologize. I see your hand. Go ahead.
You do not need to apologize. You guys are having your discussion. I just wanted to throw out there. I agree with everything.
Pick it up.
I agree with everything Jeffrey just said. And if we want the county to be kinder and gentler, then I think that this is a really good conversation to have because as Patrice pointed out, our hiring practice isn't working really well right now. And so it's another way to look at it on how we can make it's because we need to fill positions. And so and we also have the model of what we did many years ago with Cowworks Welfare to Work. It was called back in the day where we did work with these individuals who were entering that new program back then to bring those people into county jobs to give them a second chance at employment and self sufficiency. And I think that this is very similar to that. And so I do think that we can make our HR kinder and gentler. We are not need to be some behemoth employer that makes it difficult for people or or makes people, like Nicole said, repeat themselves over and over over again. We want to bring people on board. We don't want them to be off somewhere else getting jobs that they can get quicker. And I'll step off my soapbox now.
So do you know if that program is still in place? I used to work for Welfare to Work. Did they ever bring that back?
I I think that was just just like anything else like CalAid, you know, it was an effort that was done and funded through other agencies and and they did it. And I think it was highly successful. In our county it was and.
It was.
Yeah. And now I think, you know, it's just, it was Whole Person Care and then now it's CalAid. You know how it goes.
Thank you. I was trying to add in your note in here. Did we capture his note about the? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I was trying to figure out where on our document to put it so I don't lose it because I like that extra note that you added there. Okay, so so we left off with the, oh, sorry, we left off with the sorry to go backwards, evaluate for the HR practices or the robust discussion that we just had. Also notated on here employment services, pre-release identification of immediate employment opportunity. I'm sorry, Justin just said that. The next one we had on there. I made a note because we have the guaranteed income under the pre and post release, but I recall Rubicon talking about the stipend program. That's the same thing as the guaranteed income, right?
I believe so. They do have a guaranteed income.
Right.
Project.
Okay. I made a note of that. I just wanted to make sure I didn't double put it. Okay. The last one that we had outside of a pilot program for education, the next one we had was educated, excuse me. Has some additional notes for education and training to county departments around cultural assistivity for AB one oh nine employees. One oh nine employees, excuse me, AB one oh nine participants. So that was something that was brought from the presentation, making sure staff understand. We heard that a few times of hiring individuals that would live experience, making sure staff understand. the presentation, making sure staff understand. We heard that a few times of um, hiring individuals that would live experience, making sure staff understand how to to work with those individuals. I made a note of implicit bias of that. Is that required through the county or only required from court? That is, okay, okay, okay.
But you're, you're, so you're recommending cultural sensitivity training um, for county agencies and CBOs as they're working with clients?
Yes.
And that, this is still under the employment program?
Correct.
Something like that, Patrice. How, do you have a recommendation on how we would get to a dollar amount?
Um. We could do a, uh, we could kind of circle it around to see what potential um, what other funders may have done in this space.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So just on what I'm thinking, um, for those two items where we put create job training program with on the job training to provide pathways to the county and create internships, I just made a bullet for pilot and then put those two under there in our working document, because that's like, that goes in the pilot program. So what we're, initially, the, the thing that we are recommending for the employment is a pilot program around creating job training programs with on the job training to provide pathways into county roles and creating internship for county positions. That's number one. Additionally, what we're asking for is to colla, and with your um.
Clean Slate.
Clean Slate on there. See, I'm trying to remember. Uh, and then additionally, we're asking for um, evaluate, not evaluating, but more collaboration with the Human Resource Department um, around information on the hiring process and the new, the nexus document, documentation. And then um, education and training to county departments around cultural sensitivity for, ooh, sorry, I can't talk. Cultural sensitivity for AB 109 clients. Okay. All right. Any questions around that? Around that section? From the committee? No. Okay. Any questions or comments from the um, from anyone on Zoom? Seeing. All right.
Nicole?
So we're gonna, okay, go ahead.
Um, I don't know. This isn't a question, but Jamie Sefter left a comment saying CC Works is the Cowworks program and it's operated by EHSD, and she also included a link. I would just like to share that.
Oh, that program is still um in place then, okay. So that's something that we can um, look at. I haven't seen that program in a long time.
Can we just link out to you guys?
Okay. All right. So moving along to um, our final um, recommendation, which was around the pre and post release. So uh, we have a few items on here um, that we wanted to bullet. So um, it, uh, we wanted to allocate some funding around transportation upon release, expand services from release to Central and East County. Um, we also made a note in reference to rich housing, which ties in with our first recommendation for housing. So explore housing option for pre and post release. Better CBO and program collaboration for exit into housing. So this particular bullet was still tied to whatever um, it would, not whatever, but it would tie into it, our recommendation number one. The next one is our core team expansion was also ties into our recommendation number one for housing. Um, so core team assessment and placement. Uh, we made a note, needs to be um, more connection, repurposed housing, permanent supportive housing, and the core reentry individual can focus on reentry for direct flows to providers. Um, so both of those items, we did put them under the pre and post, because it has to do when someone leaves, but they do tie into that first recommendation. So my question would be, to tie into both, are we, can we still notate that there or do we need to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The next one that we have, um.
Or, or, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One way you can look at it is, the first, for the first priority area, you could talk about um, a, a justice core team that's operating out of community. So this is for, for justice and faculty folks who are already out.
Yes, street outreach. Okay, got it. Okay.
And then the, it, under the pre and post release, you could speak, you could articulate that that same core you, you are recommending also has a component to it where they're going in custody, they're, they're supporting the immediate releases.
Okay. Okay. We'll make that there. Okay.
So that's kind of like a two-pronged approach from the same team.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay.
Going back to the first one, you have transportation upon release. Isn't this something that we already have in the county?
I know we have it. Wait, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I know people had named it as like, it's not working very well. Um, or it's not available when they need it. So maybe we, is there a way we can recraft that? Because it, it sounds like the resources might be there, but they're not being used appropriately. Correct me if I'm wrong.
They are there. It's just the way that they have to be used. Is, as you can see what was presented by the sheriffs, it's very hard to determine when someone is going to get out, right? But there are a list of different uh, transportation, the Public Defender's Provide Transportation, and RSC provides transportation. Um, RSC provides transportation west, central, and east, although somebody does. So the process is someone does have to come back to RSC, and there's a reason for that, which makes sense. But there's already, there is, there is transportation. To answer your question quickly, there's transportation to RSC, Public Defenders, and a core team. So I guess it's trying to figure out um, where the, that gap is, and it's just my personal opinion, we, it's hard to know when someone is going to get released, right? And that's, that's a very difficult. Correct. So. Correct. So it's doing business hours. So um, and it's doing business hours.
During business.
When transportation is provided. And the other crucial part that is missing, the person has to want it. Um, so transportation is offered to individuals, but sometimes they don't take it. So I don't know if it's something that is us, I don't want to say add a survey, but, but I mean, is, I guess, is, is looking at what's there, maybe, yeah, how can we add more to it to expand it, but we do have uh, transportation services in, in place.
The, the, one through um, RSC, and even the network is doing this too. It's mostly though um, rideshare.
Right, correct.
So I think at the, uh, at a previous meeting, we'll have to talk about um, not just having a car show up to pick up someone and then bring them to wherever their.
Right.
Patient will be, but to also have someone with lived experience or a credible messenger or what have you, that, that's also there um, to support them as well.
So a warm handoff. So it's, it's more of a instead of like the rideshare, because that, that is, that is correct. That's currently what's in place. It's providing transportation upon pickup and taking them to where they need to be, or, or doing that warm handoff, ensuring that they get picked up and transported from different providers. Now, that's not in place, Jeffrey, um, but call him Jeffrey. Now, Justin, that's not in place currently where a provider is a used to be, but where a provider would transport them back and forth between providers, ensuring that they're getting to their appointments. We don't have that. Answer your question?
It does. I, I just don't think this bullet point encompasses that.
So we can expand on it. Maybe um.
So here, here are a couple of things I heard, and maybe this will help some.
Patrice, can you talk a little louder? I'm sorry.
I was saying, so here are a few things I heard, and maybe this will help um, for, uh, for clarification. So you you're, you're recommending um, transportation at the point of release, possibly at all hours, let's say twenty-four hour um, um, availability. Uh, you also mentioned some bridge housing. So I'm guessing at the point of release, transfer to, uh, transporting this individual to where was the next location? Is that the bridge housing? Is that the uh, family member, their own, whatever.
Correct.
That's yet to be determined.
Correct.
In terms of your, you guys' recommendation. But then you're also recommending core player role here to go inside to do um, the, uh, the assessment for all the intake, all of that. Um, and are you also wanting or to play a role in tran, transporting individuals to, or just wanting to get clarity on the roles of the different? Because the way, it sounds like you're trying to build up is a reentry, um, immediate reentry sort of uh, set of processes that will take a person from the jail to point A, and then maybe they're being held for a little while, but they're being, but in, in, in that interim, they're also being supported by folks who.
Correct.
You know, that has lived experience or what have you. And then separately, now getting connected to programs.
So yes, so it's, so, so it's, in reference to the transportation piece, correct. So it would be twenty-four hour round-the-clock services for individuals to be able to not only transport them to where they have to go, but exactly what you said, providing with services. I guess case management. Um. Go pull up my note. One second. Let me, let me go back and pull up.
And I think if you parse those pieces out at the point of, of release, it's gonna help you understand where the additional resources from the fifteen million will come into play.
So I'll give my honest, my, my honest answer. Transportation upon release is not one, not one that I, I um would put on here, because I have the same question that is looking at what we already have. So I know where we're um, recommending for funding for a reentry core team person that could probably help with some of that transportation. But the question is, for the services that we have, um, is it after hours? That's what we're missing. So we do know one of the gaps is that after hours is not doing business hours. So if the current um, transportation services that are in place don't provide that, then a recommendation would just be for transportation services outside of working hours. That, that's where my recommendation will go, will go, would go into getting in depth to the, I'm gonna take it here and give you all of that. That sounds a little bit different than just saying transportation services itself. That's like a whole kind of a program thing. So, because we have the core, um, depending on if they're working with the Public Defender's Office, we have someone transporting them there, we have AOD. There's all kinds of different avenues of transportation. It's just understanding what that looks like. So I think it's having an understanding of that and who does transfer on the weekends? Who does transfer over hours? And if no one does, then that would be our ass.
Because uh, Public Defender's, do they, the, what's the transportation?
There's flaws. What do you think?
Um. So I, I'm guessing it's through the client services um, sort of unit. So if someone is being released from jail and you're taking, wherever, wherever it is.
We mainly transport people who are going to programs, to residential treatment. That's our main transport to treatment program.
And what is that mode of transportation? Is it rideshares? Is it vans? Is it what, what?
Car.
Kind of got you. Okay. Okay. What kind of person?
So I think it's us identifying that, um. But based on what I've heard and what, what, what we've heard and what we know so far, really the major issue is that, that um, outside of business hours, there's no transportation on the weekend either.
Right.
For that. Those are the main two areas um, where that gap of service is at. Give that, Justin? And I'm, I'm on a fence regarding to expand on services for release to Central, because that's a whole different program within itself. So that would be like a wouldn't that be like a pilot or RFP out for that? I mean, it's not really tied on, I know it's a bullet there, but it's not really tied directly to transportation. That's a program within itself, to transport someone to Central and East and then provide additional case management and services, right? By the way I'm reading it.
Yeah. And isn't there all, like, there already is case management in all parts of the county, right? Is there a way for us to just like you're saying here, expand the time that these resources would be available through those current contracts?
Expand the time. What do you mean?
So like, we were talking about like after hours or weekends?
The service hours, drivers and delivery.
Okay.
So providing, making a recommendation to um, buy transportation services outside of business hours and weekend hours. And in reference to the next bullet, expansion of service.
Also at those hours.
Yes.
So one good example of that would be the RFC, because they do have the evening hours as part of their programming. Um, I want to say it goes up to about eight, maybe eight o'clock at night um, during the week. They may have Saturday hours. I could be wrong on that one. I'll double check. Uh, so we do already have a model of that in place. And you know, the center is more of your works and, works and waters kind of location, whereas with the, the other service hub, which is your reentry network, a lot of those staff are really just are field-based. Though they have a location, it's more or less like an administrative office for their staff, right?
Right.
Uh. So to expand their hours, after hours, uh, the place for folks to go, I think for them in particular, that might be a little tricky. So um, you may want to consider any housing providers, or like if you're gonna do a bridge housing element, um, that could be a possibility.
Under there. Okay. So so far we have the transportation after hours and weekend. Um, and then expansion of programs and services, RSC is an example. And it can go under Bridge Housing. Um. I like that. I'll come back to it. We just read the, what else we have. We can come back, so I can make sure I have it right. We talked about the bridge housing. We talked about the core team expansion. We also want to move forward with Guaranteed Income Pilot. And two other items that we have on here goes back like the other examples that we gave where it may not be a dollar amount tied to it. But we have required contracted agencies and county departments to align on an intake form and use of care, because it was brought up um, how um, there needs to be intake being done in custody that's already getting enrolled, that was in place and not in place anymore. So to make sure there is collaboration. I believe GPS put that in there as submission. That make sense? So require contracted agencies and county departments to align on an intake form and use of care. So um, while they're in custody and clients are getting enrolled, there used to be an agreement on an intake form or create an intake form for people to get intaked in the program while they're in custody. So when they walk out, they're not doing the process.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Universal.
Correct.
Are you, so, I mean, the contracted providers have access to safe, which in safe is a um, intake, so to speak, that every provider that's working with the client um, has to utilize that to in, enter them into the system.
Right.
So um, I guess I'm trying to figure out how's that different.
Well, I guess, I guess there.
They need to have paper copy to go in, with them inside.
Well, one of the gaps that was brought up was that individuals are not getting intake while in custody. So providers are meeting with individuals, but then they have to wait to get intake once they're out. So I guess there was supposed to have been a process where the purpose of providers coming in was to meet with individuals and to start the process while in custody, so that when they get out, they're already getting intake. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I wasn't part of the whole. So that, so I guess the whole initial setup with RSC, GPS, Health Right, and the hubs of individuals coming in to, to work with participants, get the referrals to safe and do an intake. So I guess that's not happened. So it was to uplift that and to bring better collaboration with them partners to intake individuals while in custody.
I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll just make a note of it for all our data to look into.
Okay.
Um, and, and possibly even bring that up at the next um, coordination meeting that the sheriff's office holds to ensure that for those that are. To ensure that for those that are contracted or being invited. Are they being invited in or they're going themselves, that they have the documentation that they need to um. Is is this in reference to what Jana was mentioning, like even having something on the devices on the um. I uh uh the call my past tablets.
Yeah.
So that they can have their own ability to.
To fill the uh form out, it was in a list of their recommendations, yes.
Okay.
Um so I'll highlight that, it won't be a recommendation.
Yeah, you could highlight it, well, you could highlight it as a recommendation, not necessarily a recommendation for funding necessarily, but that's something that can be. Looked into it.
And the last one we had, of course, we put education enhancement of digital technology resources support. Expansion of in custody offerings, so um. Do you wanna expand on that, Justin? I know we put it from the recommendations.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Last one, the educate enhance um of digital technology resources.
Yeah, I think that was uh Jana's request, she was looking at um. Additional technology, I don't know if it was like tablets or B R or something. Um I don't know if it's something we wanted to.
Referring to ver- uh virtual reality um. You could do certain trainings um like welding, for example, through V R.
Right.
Um and so she was highlighting some of those as examples.
We don't necessarily have to have it, I was just flagging all the things.
So what I'm hearing, our recommendations will be transportation upon release, looking into after hours and weekends um. We are uh thinking about expansion of programs and services um after hours, possibly something underneath the bridge housing part of it. Um and then the core team expansion for in custody support services, around core team assessments and placements. Uh we would like to uplift guaranteed income. And then the other ones were just notes that we made. Yeah, the the language thing and that's all notes, so those are our recommendations, I know I said it kind of quickly, didn't you repeat that, cause I was trying to be what was in front of me.
No, I think I are.
Okay. Are we okay with those? Okay, so that that covers our um our recommendations for housing, behavioral health, employment and pre and post release. Um so we uh I'll open up if there are any other comments and questions because we do have to look at the second time, we do have to go into our other ask. Which are the budget modifications.
Nope.
Alright, so we'll move into number six, which is the the brief our departmental program modifications. So the first one that we have is detention health funds for monthly injection based substance addition addiction treatment. Um so one of the notes that I made for myself was um. The Cal A and I know there's pending for the Medi-Cal to approve for that um. But I guess I'm gonna have our discussion as a thing, so I do under, I do see the need for it um. But I just wanna get everybody's feedback and open up for us to kind of talk about these items. I don't have the dollar amounts in front of me, so I wish you would have put them on there, but.
It was a quarter of a million, it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. But the the cost to distribute on a monthly basis was like sixteen hundred or eighteen hundred per person.
Sixteen.
Thank you.
So knowing that there could be something pending where Cal A could approve for those under Medi-Cal to have that. Funding, could there be a recommendation? How can I say it? I'm trying to figure out the, my sugar low, I'm trying to eat this.
That it could be built in another way.
Correct, yes. But I wanted to get your feel on how do you feel about that particular item in reference to using these fundings?
Yeah, I didn't think it needed to be funded through this project.
My only issue was that they were using it to provide the service for people who were abusing abusing their oral meds.
Yeah.
And to me, that was kind of reason to just. Wean them off the med period, I I had trouble with the purpose for.
I did too.
And I think in in the, so for me, that added on purpose is what had changed my thought process, cause initially I did not agree. Um and then when they added on that purpose of someone misusing the pill form of it. Because they will, and custody, they need to eat or something, they'll give it away, so to be able to say. Someone is in need of a drug, but it got taken away because they sold it.
They sold it, you're not taking it.
Right, but taking a shot means you have to take it, you can't give it away.
Right.
So instead of us saying that we're not gonna provide you a service, we are, but you can sell this one, so we're gonna inject you instead of giving you a pill. So that's what made me change, like, I never thought about that um. But again, uh we'll go with the majority, but that was, I looked at her response in a different manner, cause initially I felt as though it didn't fit, and then I put. Um it may be funded through Cal A, so I made that note.
I think the other thing to piggyback off Jeffrey's thought was like the way she was talking about the transition back. Uh post-release and how they have to wean them back to the medication, and it's like. If someone is abusing it or not using it in custody, how do you, how do you make that change? To have them use it post custody if the interim time you're doing this monthly injectable. But anyway, I think we came to a consensus.
I viewed it from a lens of the person was choosing not to take it. So now you're gonna take sixteen hundred dollars every month and give them something they were choosing not to take.
And then, see, I took it different where it may not have been a choice.
Well, if you weren't taking it, you weren't taking it.
Well, 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 okay, well, this is great discussion, well, no, because you're thinking of a mind of an addict, if I'm in ju- in jail and I don't have any way to eat. I don't have any way to do anything, I'm not getting a packet, and I mean, it's it's wrong, it's wrong to sell it. But at that blind state, and they're not thinking about their addiction and I.
Wrong, wrong is a judgment, not taking it is a choice. I'm not making a judgment about whether it's right or wrong, I'm making a choice whether I take it or not.
Correct.
So if the person is not taking it, to use her word, abusing the medication. The person is abusing the ma- medication and taking a choice whether they take it or not.
Right.
It's a choice.
Correct.
So do I let that person make a choice and not take the medication? And I support that person with an injection that costs sixteen hundred dollars every month? I mean, do we make that choice for him and give him a, an injection that costs sixteen hundred dollars every month? I don't wanna make that choice. That's what I was thinking when she was presented, like.
Okay.
That's so, that's expensive every month, and then and then my brain was thinking. I'm twelve times, and I'm thinking in terms of, well, what is, what if that person is fighting, say, a serious case where they're in custody for. Three years, four years, fighting a real ca- a real case, and I really kind of wanted to ask her like, well. What happens if that person is in custody, say, for a long period of time?
Right.
But then she kind of answered it, when she said that they transition a person back to the oral medication.
Right.
At some point, but I could just see where it could get expensive, but then you kind of answered it when you said that. You know, they would at some point transition them back to the oral medication anyway, but. I mean, it's a, it's an expensive medication for somebody that chooses not to really take the medication anyway.
And then me, like I said, I put the other hat on because I'm thinking from the uh addiction standpoint. Um of an individual that's going through, which in sometime that additional support, they may not know they need it, but it then could save somebody's life. And there should be a dollar amount to that, so that's so, it's just a good discussion, you have both different views on it. So I was looking at it from that aspect of it, but again. If we look at the count of the committee to feel like it shouldn't be funded and one does, so then it goes with the. We don't, yeah, anyway, I don't know why my mind went to vote.
The other thing is, I, it feels like we have a pretty concise. Uh documentation of our recommendations, and if we wanted to bring this aspect back to a larger board, I'm happy to do that.
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, I mean, I I I definitely wanna go with the agreement here, so if if it's in. Agreement between the two, they, I mean, I do, I see both sides, so we have, we both have valid opinions, and I'm glad that we. All as committee looked at it from both lenses, though, right, it wasn't just one part, so it's. Us looking at it from the cost perspective, which is a great perspective, and then looking at it from the. Um I looked at it from the person and the addiction and the need, because when someone is addicted, they may, of course. A lot of them are not ready to recover, and they may say, I don't wanna take the P O R. When they come into jail, that's the most time that they ever have any kind of recovery, it is. And they don't know that they need it, so it can actually save someone in a sense, so I looked at it from that lens of it, so.
What I, what I'm hearing is that um there's no um. There there there's no disagreement about how to move forward with this modification. With maybe a difference in rationale.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe both can be stated, you know, I think it's uh could, it 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 uh. Maybe it will be noteworthy to have to include both of those um.
Okay, the next one is the district attorney's office. I did not agree that I felt like that uh should be funded under this uh month. I did not feel like it aligned with our recommendations, I I appreciate them trying to make it align. But I didn't see the the connection, so I'll see, we'll be back here.
Look at Justin.
Are you just waiting, Jeffrey? Um I'm all for restorative justice approaches, and I think that our county should invest more in them. Um and so when I thought, when I saw this brought, um I was excited about it. I think the barrier that I have about all these budget or the following budget modifications is the like. Funding it for X amount of years, and then it's gone or like. I don't know, I think it's tricky with this one-time allocation and trying to fund something that should be ingrained into the baseline. And so I don't really have. A strong opinion either way, um I think it should be funded, but I don't know if this is the right pathway to to have it funded.
And I definitely agree with you, cause I'm all about restorative justice, and I like the program itself and what it stands for and what it does. Um and I'm having a hard time with that itself with all of them, to be honest with you in this space. Um I'm trying to make that decision, so. We're just stuck for choose what.
Jeffrey, what about you?
I'll, I'll, I'll pass.
No comment.
Wouldn't be fair.
I mean, is there other ways for this type of? This, sorry, my brain is so foggy right now.
I think, I think as a committee, we're just, we're, I'm be honest, we're stuck. We. Is, what's being uplifted on all of these are great. It's just finding, do they fall in this space with this? Maybe that 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 we have and kind of piggybacking off of what Justin just said, is where we had difficulties coming up with a decision. Around this, the, yeah, if I, if I, did I do a quick recap for you, Justin?
I'm sorry?
Did I recap it for you uh?
Yeah, I think it's hard to, yeah, I, that's exactly it. And maybe it's as simple as we just say no to all three, just as a blanket. This isn't the directive that we were under, and it doesn't fall within. The approach that C C P recommended us taking on the fifteen million.
Let us say. I mean, yeah, your recommendation.
I'm like.
No, whatever you feel is necessary to say, um I think you will need to give a um a rationale of and um. Be somewhat clear about that. If that's imperative, um I think what would also be helpful, given that. Um essentially you all are at least in agreement with what has been lifted up by these departments. Um in is also um. Recommending maybe uh other potential funding sources um. That could be uh looked into on on, Cal A is front and center in our brain, so that's why we can identify. Attention how um for um the D A's project um and. Staffing uh uh was it class servicemen, their position. Uh I'm not, not quite sure where that could land, um but there are just, there are. There are either grants that are out there, both federal and state, there are also, we also have measure X um. Body that the, you know, does receive recommendations from county agencies as much as they do from the community. So there there are potentially other avenues that you all can also lift up, but I I think. Um just in service to what the departments were doing and bringing their modifications to you all. Care to share the rationale for your decision or your recommendation. Uh as well as your acknowledgement of what of, you know, you feeling as though these pieces aren't needed and necessary within our system.
So can we also do this, maybe look at, before we, because I I I'm. Can we look at our initial recommendations that we have to ensure that we allocate funding where it's needed for those? And then possibly look at if we did wanna move forward any of these, allocate a certain amount to.
Each one.
Each one, even if it's not exactly what they asked for, but say, hey, we are willing to give. Because for, for example, like, I know we're talking the same thing, but have different views, like for detention help. Um also for like, even for the district attorney's office, I'm I'm all for restorative justice, I think. Um uh uh having the community individuals be a part of that, I know that there are people at the table that. Are even part of, of course, I mean, it's a program, and the same thing for the public defender's office. Even though it's not tied to the service itself and is to a manager, their services working with this population is really great within the the jail, so it's. I understand the need for what they're asking for, I just don't, for me, I don't wanna pull away from what our rec- our work was for. And I wanna ensure that money goes to what our initial recommendations were, and then say, okay. You know, we can possibly have that, but I don't wanna take away from what the initial work was, that's my honest opinion, so I don't mind um. I know there's different asks in other places they can go to, but I wanna make sure that we take care of the need initially first. So it can, are we able to do that, look at our recommendations and say we wanna?
You may wanna talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, we keep looking at shoes like.
In response to that, certain, just as we mentioned earlier about across each priority area. You have your recommended um services or programs. You start ironing out those, what those allocations would be for each of those, and then depending on what is left over. Or if anything is left over, then you consider uh potentially um. Either funding in full or partial of these other modifications.
So my recommendation for the committee is um. For us to come back and allocate funding to those key uh recommendations that we uplifted for housing, behavioral health, employment. And pre-release, I would also like to bring um these budget. As to full, full board at the next meeting to kind of get their feedback and opinion, opinion on that. And then let's look at the funding that we did for our initial ask, and then possibly, you know, for the sake of either. Allocate some of whatever we have left or some portion to um some of these ass. But I do wanna take care of what we have first, so what is your feedback on that? I'm looking for you two. I'll take your honest opinion.
I agree, but I also would hope that you would consider that the population of the. Agencies that you're talking about, who are the population that they're serving?
Correct.
You know, it's not just, you're just looking at that agency, but who is that population that they're serving? Don't just look at like, what is that agency or who is that agency, was that population? Don't just look at like, what is that agency or who is that agency was that population? Because it's not just an agency like an entity, but who is that population?
No, and I I definitely agree with you, which was, for me, I actually agree with everything. You just said, because for me, that's why I left off with the the attention help, because I know exactly who they serve. Public defender's office, because I know exactly who they serve and.
I'll I'll tell you one of the reasons why I didn't want to speak about the. The district attorney, because for me. I struggle with just being that not saying that they can just not charge people. I struggle with not saying that, because I know that I have a bias towards that. I didn't really want to say that, so, but I said it. So I said it. I didn't want to say it, but they can choose who they charge or don't charge. So I struggled with that program.
No, and I I I.
Didn't want to say it, and I didn't want to say it a group on camera, but, you know.
So I won't I won't leave you out hanging with yourself. So that was one of my struggles, were tying into exactly what you said with the population. That was one of my struggles. I love the program, but I could not tie it into the population that we, I couldn't understand why it was in this funding when it came to eighty-one oh nine. And that's why I asked the question at the presentation, is it for those with charges or without? And then my next question was. How many of those are within our eighty-one oh nine population that are assisting? That's important to me. So for our fund, is it? Had unto our popu- why do I keep looking at you like you?
I actually have a response. Because it's not, yes, it's a, I think it's a multitude of things we are considering. Well, first of all, all three agencies are touching a justice impacted.
Individual, right.
And in different, in a different, in different capacities. So it's all the same as far as I'm concerned. It's all the same population. Within separately, regardless of the district attorney's specific program. Yes, that might be the case, which you're looking up, Jeffrey, but then similarly. They are trying to then through this process embed a a restored process that involves. Folks from the community to be a part of that and then further than linking those individuals to whatever resources that they may need. So. I think that extra layer of it being a restorative process. It is an important one, and I think it it kind of showcases that the district attorney's office is willing to do more than just. It is to two certain policies in terms of their decision-making internally, but then also in a way to engage the community to be part of the solution, so to speak. So that's another kind of wins to to look at. So is that in alignment than what? Cal is interested in? I would say it would be. It's restorative justice work. It's just being, it's being delivered in a in a in a different kind of capacity.
And so I I guess for me, since. I mean, I appreciate this whole conversation that we're we're having. I I think that's why I kind of. Went back to just to simplify it, because we can all give our feelings and what we think and ideas. And so for me, this for we are, we are tasked with very big job and decisions to make. So I figured. To just make it easier would be, like I said, was what I recommended, because then we're tasked to go, okay, like we said, we have our our bias and our ideas and what we think. So to remove all those things is really focusing on what cab and work was initially those those key areas. Ensuring it gets funded however it needs to be, and then taking something towards the rest of it. And also bringing it to full cab and getting their feedback too and what they think about those areas.
And I'm sorry, just a touch of.
And we're right at three, so if you all are still able to. To stand around so we can finish that part. Are we okay to keep going?
I'm I'm trying.
I know, I'm trying to get past it for you.
Justin, I wish I could DoorDash you some tea.
I have tea. It's just exhaustion. I'm good with bringing it to the full board. I think the other lens I would bring to the restorative justice piece is just. We also want to reduce the number of people who have charges and are incarcerated. And I think that's a win for CAB if. We provide pathways for individuals to avoid that. At least from my perspective on how we deal with incarceration. And so that's an opportunity to 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 try to implement that. But I'm I'm all for allocating resources on the identified priorities. And then getting feedback from the full board, and if we have additional resources to further the conversation on these three items.
And then in reference to our AB one oh nine modification, which was RFC and Center Force that we discussed. Way back in December, I think it was. Are we still in a, what? Oh, are we still in agreeance for Center Force for their housing ask and RC for their building enhancements?
What was Center Force's housing ask?
So it was sixty thousand. It would be a pass through through the reentry network. To Center Force for their gender responsive case management services that they provide.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for those two.
Okay, so we are in agreeance that we are okay with moving forward with the AB one oh nine modifications for Center Force Housing and RC Build Enhancements. And then we are going to bring back detention hell, district attorneys, public defenders to full cap to get their feedback. Our initial goal at our next meeting is to review all of our recommendations and add a dollar amount to it. And then either allocate or figure out a. Money left over to possibly allocate allocate to the additional budget modification, either to what they asked for. Or at least some of what they asked for.
Yeah, the one item that I see we're overlooking here is the men of women of purpose had an ask as well. We didn't discuss that.
Their ask wasn't a budget modification. Tied into they submitted for that program. Their funding, correct me if I'm wrong, their their funding is at the, that's not the mentorship. The funding they get from AB one oh nine is.
From AB one oh nine is for their peer mentoring request count. What they were proposing to to possibly do. The inside, outside. They would 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 have essentially sought resources from this pot of funds to to do that. I mean, and I did get clarity as to how it would be different from the jail to community service that they're operating currently. Jails, so.
Think if you look at what they're asked for in reference to their recommendation, they asked for housing funding, right? So if we go on RFP, there you go. Transportation, we mentioned that under pre and post-release, however that goes out, there you go. So I think in in our recommendations, it kind of covered. All that they're asking for. So however that gets pushed out there. Everyone will have an opportunity to apply for it. I tried to make a next step on our documents so that I can remember what we just. What we do fit. Hopefully, it's clear. We can add some more to it. So I think we pretty much covered what our next steps. In reference to our recommendations and what our goal is to do next. Any questions? No? All right, I know that we are over with time, so our next item on our agenda was to schedule future AB one oh nine access funds. So our next meeting is.
So you'll just a really quick. The you you all for your next full cap meeting on April eleventh will present as part of your report out. These both included items of the various recommendations that you want to. You call it with and then have. Get feedback from the the members with all of your recommendations. And hopefully, we will we will set that up to be an action item so that they can endorse with the the direction you all are going. Even though you don't necessarily have funding allocations made just yet. So we can discuss that further at that meeting. And then at your April nineteenth meeting will be the meeting where I will want to. Finalize your proposal. Re recommendations for the programs and services and allocations for each of those. That's on April nineteenth. The CCP meeting, you would want to prepare for a presentation of your recommendations. For their April twenty ninth meeting. I did check in with C A O's office to see what would be the deadline to submit. Documents for that and leave there aiming for on April twenty third or twenty fourth. And by the way. There will be a budget hearing on the twenty second, ten to twenty third. Budget hearings, those those two days. C A O did make sure they're they are awaiting for CAB's recommendations.
But there's a CCP meeting again?
It's going to be on now on a Monday, but this particular meeting will be on a Monday, April twenty ninth at ten thirty.
And so we need to get our presentation stuff, you said, by the twenty third?
Probably by the twenty third.
All right, so next steps. Tree's covered them. She actually did so, Gary Anna, I'll get the report out to you on Monday for both meetings this month. So that is it. Is there any other questions and comments before we adjourn? All right, we will adjourn to our next policy and budget subcommittee meeting on April the nineteenth. At eleven AM. Thank you, everyone.